Okay, you tell me because June is resigning. Which of these apply if any? Because she's, her resignation is effective June 23rd.
Yes.
Correct. After the third Tuesday of the month.
The end of the official year.
Right, so there'll be a special election for the office.
But read both of them.
I wanna go.
They both of them make no sense. I think it, because they both say prior. June 20, you know, both of them use prior to the third Tuesday.
Just means you gotta stay June.
June 23rd is never prior to June 17th.
What does that love you Jake?
So the village already got it?
Yeah.
So why?
What do you have, a pick of, or your time to?
I think it falls into cracks because we, that two, two weeks period. Two week period.
I don't think the statute actually applies because they use the word crack for two of them.
Well, it's the official year.
Right.
The official year starts on, on July 1st.
No, she starts on, on June 22nd. It started at noon on the first Monday following the general election.
Which in this case would be July 6th.
Or 7th.
Yeah, we have to start.
I'll get it later. I have this daily, I haven't given it.
He's taking it to your seat.
How are you doing?
Okay then.
I'll look, I'll look, I'll look at it though. I can hit you, I can hit you the answer. I have the answer.
You do?
Oh yeah.
It's too bad you don't get it tonight, so the interviewees know what they're getting themselves into.
But like it is, there's, there's really no, there's no options in terms of the law, the electoral office, because they're gonna have to run for a special election because it makes it.
We are, we are.
I know, but as a special election, it would be a special election just for one year.
Yes.
And then they gotta run the year after, on 27th. Because that's what June's term would otherwise have expanded.
That's correct, right. You have to, that's exactly right.
But you gotta run two years in a row.
That's correct.
Okay, well, welcome everybody to the Village Webster Board meeting for April 12th, 2025. And after the stand, Pledge of Allegiance. And June, would you like to meet us please?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undeniably, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Uh, first, uh, item on our agenda tonight as, as we laugh, is public comment. If anybody would like to address the board, come to the side, Portia, St. Mary's, and we'll listen.
Hello Peter, 59 Dunning Avenue. Hope you're all doing well tonight. So I have a slightly different hat on tonight, uh, coming to as one of the commissioners of the Board of Elections tonight, um, to remind everyone about the village election, uh, next Tuesday. Um, but I also want to remind everyone that this is going to only be the third election and we'll be using our new voting machines. Um, so I wanna make sure that there is information available for, um, the board and for Heather. She can put these up and you can keep these, all the rest of the extra ones.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I had news the other night, you look good.
Oh, thank you. Okay, um, so the, uh, I, uh, it's a, it's gonna be a, a very, it's a very simple process to use the new machine. So I wanna encourage everyone, um, to go onto the Monterey County Board of Elections website, um, and, uh, look at the video that's there that is, that shows you a live demonstration of how to vote on the machine. It's really very simple, you will come in, um, they'll check in just like normal. Um, you'll be getting a blank ballot, um, a small, uh, slip of paper, um, about this big, it's a white sheet of paper. Um, that'll be placed into a printer, um, which will then have a header on it, get a header on it, which will let the machine, the voting machine know what ballot will come up. For the village election, obviously, it'll be the village election for the, uh, for the mayor and trustee of the Village Webster. Um, and then, um, you'll see the, you know, what, what will happen is on the left-hand side, that the display will come up with that ballot on it. You'll just make your selections there. Um, once you decide what you wish to select is what you wanted to, you just hit, um, to, to print the ballot. Um, the ballot will actually be printed for you on the right-hand side. Um, just to compare the selections that you see on the right-hand side with what you selected on the left-hand side, assuming they're the same, and they should be, um, you would just hit cast ballot. Um, the ballots then cast and is it put into a secure ballot bin at the back of the machine. Um, and that's, that's it. With a, a ballot that this length, most voters will probably take less than 90 seconds, um, to go through it. Uh, we have had great success with the voting machine for two elections now. We use it in the March village elections, um, and also in the school district elections. Um, I, the March village elections, one of those villages with the village of Pittsburgh, um, where the mayor's race was only decided by one vote. Um, so not only did we get a chance to test the machine under some pretty tight conditions, we actually able to do even some recounts to determine if it worked under those conditions and it worked flawlessly. So, uh, I hope all of you, um, have a great experience with it. Again, if you have any questions, call the Board of Elections at any time. And again, go to our website at the Monterey County Board of Elections, click where the video is, that you can look at how to use the machine. It's very simple, but it'll get you familiar with it before you come in on Election Day, um, next Tuesday. Do you guys have any questions I can answer?
I do. Can a person write, I don't see any place on here that they're, they write in, whether you can type that or whether you have the space to write that, uh, name or selection. So I'm questioning whether or not that's been eliminated from, uh, casting ballots or not.
It has not. Um, it's still there. Um, you can actually, what you would do is you would just press for the, write with the candidate column, you wish to write in that candidate's name, you know, whatever name you wish to write in. And then, um, it will come up as a screen where you type in the name. Um, so you just type in like, like B-Y-E-R-T-S.
It's on the screen typing.
Yes, yes. And once you've done that, uh, that'll be recorded by the machine. What's nice is with this particular voting machine is that when you return to the main screen, the selection that you have made will actually appear right there, so you can confirm it immediately. Uh, so if you vote for Superman, it'll actually say Superman right on that screen for you to compare to. Um, so that's, that's a really good feature. Um, the other good feature about the write-ins, which was one of the, one of the big selling points of the machine actually is you no longer have to squeeze your write-in into that little box. And we don't have to with the Board of Elections determine what that actually means. Because sometimes signatures are kind of tough, you know, words are kind of tough when people are writing them out, especially in that small little area there. So, um, now everything's typed, so it's a lot easier for us to read if there is a write-in. Um, and the machine will actually produce a listing for us of all the write-in, um, that were done, so.
Maybe we got Donald Duck.
Yes, and you can, people vote for Donald Duck, they vote for Spider-Man, they vote for all kinds of things. But those are not eligible in this jurisdiction. So you have to be a group, I think. Anyway, so, um, do you, we have any other questions? Okay, well, if you do or anything comes up, you know, Heather, if anybody calls the office and they have any particular questions, feel free to refer them to us, we'll be happy to help.
And can you let me know offline later when we can expect the machines and, you know?
They'll be delivered on, I can actually let you know now, they'll be delivered on Monday.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, and at this particular point, I think that we will move to village board business. Uh, first item on our, um, agenda tonight is resolution to approve the minutes. To make my second, I'm going to ask that we take a motion to, uh, vote on them at the next meeting. As they are not at this time available to us.
Make the motion.
Okay.
Trustee Alito?
Hi.
Trustee Malkey?
Hi.
Trustee Lauer?
Hi.
Trustee Lanzi? Hi. Mayor Byers?
Hi.
Motion passes.
All right, next item is our resolution to approve the claims and warrants. Uh, I personally had, uh, the opportunity today to go through them all and I did not have a particular question on them. Therefore, I would pass this on to Carl, if you have any questions, we're going through them.
No, I, I also looked at each and every bill and, uh, agreed with everything. No, not some votes at the time.
And I'd ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Love doing that when you know it. Did he get a second?
I'll second.
Trustee Buffy?
Hi.
Trustee Lauer?
Hi.
Trustee Alito?
Hi.
Trustee Lanzi?
Hi.
Mayor Byers?
Hi.
Motion passes.
Uh, next we have a discussion, uh, regarding, um, to propose a liaison to the fire department. We have a number of liaisons as we go through our annual meeting. And we have designated risks for things that people are responsible for. And currently, um, one item has been left off, right? Fire Department. And, uh, since it is a neighbor to us and, uh, since we have coordination with them, I think that, Carl, you have a good idea. So I'll let you expound on that if you would like to.
Well, over the past several years, there's been some, uh, differences between the bid and the fire department. And, um, I feel that if we, uh, we have set in on negotiations with the fire department, that we could kind of, um, ease the tension that's going on.
Uh, negotiation, you mean?
Not negotiation.
Terms of the coordination or?
Yeah.
Anybody that the parades that take place and?
Even now, there's a little conflict between the bid and the, you know, firehouse about scheduling, close happening at the field, at Fireman's Field and those kind of other events that they, um, are reluctant to hand out to the bid. I don't know what's going on, so I suggest that we give a, a representative meet the fire department. I don't know if it would be one-on-one or one-on-one there.
Is the fire department, you know, Fireman's Field part of the village that the bid would have a segment? I don't know. I don't believe that the Fireman's, Fireman's Field is in the village.
No, it's in the town.
It's in the town.
Uh, does the bid coordinate anything there? Is that beyond their curvy or, or not?
Well, I, you know, who's the liaison to the bid right now? I mean, you are, right? And so is your, uh, duty, you are.
I don't know, Jake, what do you think?
I think it's a great idea. It's, to me, you get together and talk and coordinate. I think we had a jazz test at the same time during the winter, right? Hold on, last year now, and if they're being coordinated. There, I know the fire department's redoing the way that they do, uh, the field. Um, but I think Fred Saban is the guy now that's coordinating those things. He's, I know he's around during the dance-off, so, um, yeah, I think it'd be, for me, it'd be a great, you know? It's a little tough when the, the, uh, main road through town is closed and somebody's having an event down at the field at the same time and someone's having one.
Yeah.
There's a, there's a point along, you know, Pier Street where you get music from both directions and it's a little confusing.
It's just a typical, you know, uh, misinterpretation of events and, uh, you know, I.
Yeah, I mean, I know, I understand what you're saying, but what would your role be? If you were the liaison, what would you do? Meet with both of them, try to?
Just second one.
Just coordinate a meeting of some sort?
Dan, does that have to be that, that liaison trust to be a board member? Doesn't have to be a board member, but if it, even if it were a board member, the village, the village government has no control or authority to regulate what goes on at Fireman's Field. So I guess you'd have to be careful if, if, if a trustee is sitting in on these meetings, are you, you know, putting some undue pressure on somebody because? I don't know. It's. Yeah, I know somebody who would gladly do that. The village, does the village even financially contribute to the Northeast Joint Fire District?
Well, so what we have, trustee Lauer asked me to put it on the agenda. I really know, and I thought if you want it on the agenda, it sounds like a good idea. There's been confusion in terms of events and dates. So he just thought just to have someone listen in so that we could have coordination with different dates. I think that was not all. And most of the liaison functions, you guys don't really tell people what to do. You kind of just listen and report back to the board. But I guess.
And you want to be able to change it, that's what.
Well, just, I guess, just to let us know.
Um, there's no sense, there's two events on the same day over here. Report it back to the board. The board doesn't have control of it, so I'm just trying to understand how the role would be if it's a board member.
Uh, even if not, I would hope they communicate to the board what things are happening. Would that person be autonomous?
Well, yeah, I, I think that's, uh, and so actually a bid member, um, now that I'm really thinking about it, a bid member should be the liaison for the fire department.
I was just gonna say that bid and the fire department should talk.
Exactly.
They do invite Elena. I, I know some, to some, we've gone a couple times, Jake, right, for big events, but that, what would be at? Is it Christmas?
Yeah, a lot of times when there's room closures and things, but that's more coordination for.
That's different.
Uh, the room closure barrier and things like that. But.
Peter, what do you think? You're a big guy.
Well, the, I, I am, but the, but the, just so you know, the village board did at one point have liaisons to the fire department. Um, so it wouldn't be out of character for the board. So that person would go to like the fire council meetings, um, they would go to, they would go to, sometimes they would go to board meetings. Um, so there would be, so there was always this ability to kind of listen and talk back and forth. And you might find there's some synergies there you're not even aware of. So we're talking exclusively about events here, it could be as much as they want to, you know, we want to replace a sign out front, how can we work together? Uh, so who knows? There's a lot of, there's a lot of things that could come up. We are new.
Well, I think the, the issue really is between the bid and fire department. And I know a person who would gladly go between the two departments and report back to the board. And I can talk to the bid and. The bid, the bid's also a creature of village government, so.
That's right.
You know, the bid doesn't exist separately but for the village. Um, yeah, so like Peter says, even though you don't have any, you know, financial interest or, you know, you don't have a ton of leverage, but just, you know, to these negotiations.
Communication.
Just in terms of better knowing what's going on, it couldn't hurt to have some, if somebody, who else relates?
Like he's already on, Jerry's already the liaison to the fire department.
Really?
Yeah, that's been, that's been on our thing for the last eighty-two years.
Well, I have no idea.
I haven't gotten that. That's not, that's not the point. The point is you put something on the agenda and said we don't have something, which we do. And second of all, like I said, I'm just trying to understand the role. I'm, I'm great about putting process together and making things better, but there has to be a role, not, there's gotta be some understanding of what the objective is to be in. And just knowing what's going on, maybe that's all we're doing and coming back and sharing it, it's great.
That makes a lot of sense.
I don't know what you do after that. You can go back to the fire department and say, hey, can you change your event? You know, because they're doing a different event. I just don't know if we could get over that business, in my opinion.
Well, it's, it's my fault for not knowing that then, but, uh.
But if you have someone that's outside this board who's a liaison and say, hey, quarterly, I want to pull you guys together monthly to talk about the upcoming events, that makes sense to me.
I do.
I, I agree.
I do, I think Jody would be a good candidate. She's very involved in the bid.
Oh my gosh, is she ever.
And the fire department. And if it's acceptable to the bid.
You keep opening events on the same days.
Yeah, it's just a sort of thing. What's the type of communication between the fire department and the bid, basically? And just make sure that.
And she knows everybody in the fire department.
Yeah.
Everybody on the bid, so, uh, she would like to have a.
That'd be a good base start. I like it.
That's all I got.
Who's gonna say anything?
She'll pretty much go to bid.
Yeah. No, we just do all the appointments, that's why I say, I'll know when he throws it down there. It's historical.
But the fire department would say, well, it's, and, and somebody who got four.
Yeah. You know, discuss all Jerry wants to hear as well.
Sorry, guys, I mean, who's coming to talk?
Well, we don't do that far, but.
Thanks.
I'm trying not to be argumentative.
She could go and.
I mean, I don't think that it, now. I'm not comfortable clearing them up.
Carl, no idea's a bad idea. Bring it up.
Yeah.
That's what you do.
Okay, thank you. I'll do that. Everybody's okay with it?
Yeah.
Peter? She probably texts me and says, what?
Uh, item four is a resolution to authorize an intermunicipal agreement with the county for the county aggregate energy program. Renewing this agreement, this agreement is in effect, it's been in effect, anyway, what I would like to do is simply to renew it. And I have a motion for authorization to, um, continue to renew this agreement with the county. The county aggregate energy program.
A good motion.
Trustee Buffy?
Hi.
Trustee Lanzi?
Hi.
Trustee Alito?
Hi.
Trustee Lauer?
Hi.
Mayor Byers?
Hi.
Motion passes.
Uh, our fifth item here is a resolution to authorize the mayor to sign the contract with Empire Wrecking for demolition of the coal barn at the wastewater treatment plant. Um, one of the considerations, one of the actual items that the, um, uh, town provided to the, uh, to the village and to, to the department that, uh, you know, we, we had the bid roll out and, uh, pursuing the, uh, changes that are going on down there. That four things had to happen, which would be one of the four things that were necessary to have it take place. And so, uh, Jake, I guess I would put this to you in terms of some of the information behind this. You've explained it to me, but you can explain it a little bit more to the board regarding this.
Yeah, we, uh, we did a, looking at the pole barn in two phases. One's a demo and then one's a destruction of the new pole barn. Um, they're gonna be spread out. Um, the demo, we did get an RFP, got three quotes. One of them came in under the bid threshold. Um, and they're all, they all have their own forms and, and way of saying things, but they're, they are all apples-to-apples comparisons. And so Empire Wrecking was the, the lowest responsible bidder and, um, we're gonna take, you know, with the board's permission, take the barn down and, and clean up the spot there, dispose of everything. So, um, we did go back and forth. They sent out a, your standard contract and reviewed it. And I went to speak for everybody, reviewed it, tweaked it a little bits on the back home and they returned it signed. So they liked the changes that Tom suggested. And there's still gonna be, like you, I spoke to you earlier, additional costs if the CM or PCB materials test come back and then you have to do some sort of abatement. Yeah, there was, there was a review, it was part of the project. It wasn't intense on that building because it's separate from the project, but it was one of the, that building's identified. Uh, the other dry bed is a greenhouse with glass and glazing and things that'd be more of the PACM. Um, they didn't find, I guess, a reason to test in this building because there wasn't articles or, or materials present that they would suspect or would have been, you know, presumed or potentially asbestos containing or PCBs. So they, there wasn't really testing, but there, that was because their investigation, I think, led them to say that there wasn't a need. So, but certainly if there's something that was identified, then it would be something that would be a separate item. But that was consistent on all of them really, is it didn't handle any hazardous material.
Are you comfortable with Empire?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. I know Sessler, previous, uh, one of the, as long as you're comfortable with that.
Yeah, no, they, they're the ones that did our, uh, our, uh, the wellhouses on Lake Road. They took down the wellhouses, not the wells. That was a well drilling company that had to do that, but the wellhouses themselves, uh, Empire did. And they've done some other stuff, of course, as well.
But all three quotes excluded any hazardous materials that were found. That's all, that would be extra.
Right, well, I'm just saying, your vote, we're, we're voting on a price that's here that if they found stuff would be different than what we believe. So usually we test, we, for the test results, add that dollar amount to this dollar amount, that's the actual cost. So that's all this question.
And I would say further, taken from my, um, discussion with you, what they would do with stone, which the stone from the existing turbine filter, and so do, uh, that would be crushed and used as a base for a new pole barn.
That's good.
A good use of it.
Yeah, it's great, beneficial use rather than taking that off-site and, or paying to get rid of it. Um, so it's good.
Okay, so then I would ask for a motion for, uh, you to sign this contract with Empire Wrecking for demolition of the pole barn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Trustee Lanzi?
Hi.
Trustee Lauer?
Hi.
Trustee Buffy?
Hi.
Trustee Alito?
Hi.
Mayor Byers?
Hi.
Motion passes. Daryl, I'm sorry. Can we go back just for one second back to the, um, county aggregate? Um, Don, didn't we say once, so they wouldn't give us the agreement? Can you just explain, we're gonna come back and have them authorize the mayor to sign the agreement? Right, isn't that what we said? Because they can only give us this draft at this point?
Yeah, I don't know if they're gonna make any changes to it, though. Obviously, Daryl cannot sign an agreement that's got draft written.
Yeah, they wouldn't give it to us at the county.
So, the county is strange. I think they wanted a resolution just to, so that the village basically indicates its intention to enter into another agreement. And then they'll send the agreement.
Yeah, they wouldn't, they wouldn't go forward until they.
So having, having a motion to intend.
Well, the motion, the motion, the motion was fine.
Yeah.
Because it, actually, except for maybe, uh, resolution to authorize, instead of the, it should be to authorize an intermunicipal agreement with the county. All right. You're not necessarily authorizing this one because it's all. But the resolution is fine.
Okay, they wouldn't give it to us unless we said.
Well, because it's not effective, it doesn't start until September, so they figure. So they figured, well, they got a lot of time between now and September to actually generate the actual contract. Okay, why they couldn't do it all at once, I don't know, but.
So once we send them notification that you approved it, then we're going to, the agreement.
Yeah, they need that.
Sorry, I just wanted to point that out.
But let me ask this question. If this is kept on file, this draft, I keep it, and the copy that is sent and we approve that we're going to sign it, if they send something that is different from that, what is, what is the meaning of what we're doing? Is it null and void?
No, well, that's why I said the resolution should say to authorize an intermissible agreement. You're not authorizing this particular intermissible agreement. You're just authorizing an agreement with a county to supply gas and electric, natural gas and electricity, period, that's it. And then they're going to follow that up with the actual agreement. So this, giving you this draft just kind of confused things, really. Just forget the draft.
I know you laughed and they said that they might be.
It was, it was a little, like I said, it was a little strange with the county person. She says, oh, all we have now is a draft. Well, what, we can't authorize entry into a draft agreement that sent us the real agreement. Well, we can't do that until that'll happen later. Okay, I guess they just want to know what municipalities are going to join with the county again. Basically, is all you're saying.
And they didn't, they weren't anticipating any changes, but.
Yeah.
And we're not going to get, you're going to sign it on contract HQ, so we're not even going to get it.
Right, yeah, they do it all electronically with the county. But there should be, before you sign it, there really should be another resolution of this board to authorize you to sign it, whether it's electronic or otherwise.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that.
It was a little confusing to Heather and me what the county actually wanted. Because I think the first time, they just sent the contract. We didn't go through this two, kind of two steps.
Yeah, it was weird.
So are we good with that?
Yeah, as long as you understand it's a two, it's a two-step process and we'll look at that agreement when it comes in and then there'll be another resolution before the board that authorizes you to enter into it. Assuming you're still the mayor.
Assuming I am, that's correct. Which brings up a point about the election, which is going to be held next Tuesday. I'll just reinforce that. And that will be held here in the boardroom from noon until nine o'clock next Tuesday. Familiarize yourself with the procedure. Look online, right? How you vote or using the new machine. Quite interesting, all different. All right. Well, at this particular point. Jake, did you have anything quick?
Are you going to help me to quick? Yes, just real, real quick then, the next meeting, I just alluded to, perhaps, before the next meeting, I sent out a bid packet for the pole barn construction. I worked on that, went back and forth and down on it, and I think we got it okay. Or I got it, well, we got it, he's got it. Don said it was all right.
As long as you expect, you just start working on this.
Yep, I did that yesterday.
And then finalize it.
Or just finalize it, just have to send it to you. And then there's also two home, there's easements that we're going to be looking at reviewing for the, this short extension of a storm sewer for up on South Avenue in the back for drainage. This year, we've gotten a lot of discussion about drainage because it's, we've got more rain and day than, I think, the last 25 years or something. So it's not always the best year to evaluate how well your drainage is working when nobody's is working and everything's saturated. And the last thing, I know a few meetings ago, point a few, I think we, there was a discussion on West Webster Firehouse. They had a letter and a proposal. I don't know, I got a call. It was, I think it was before the last meeting we talked about. I didn't know what the status of that was or anybody was able to schedule a meeting with the firehouse or the representatives of West Webster yet for the wellfield use. But I just wanted to bring it up, so.
Well, it'll be maybe tomorrow, Jake.
Okay, well, tomorrow, yes. Traveling, but.
You're traveling?
Yes.
Well, then Monday, Monday would be fine as well.
All right. Thank you, sir.
All right, at this particular time, I would like to ask the board to consider going into executive session for the matters leading to the appointment and/or appointment of a particular person. So I would ask for a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make that motion, sir.
I'll second.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer and Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Buffy?
Aye.
Mayor Myers? Motion passed.
Want the center, so you can repaint, re-letter everything. They're like $750 or $800 per sign. Isn't crazy for the amount of work. And then when we talked about doing like dibon or something in the center, what you could apply, like the gazebo or something in an oval in there.
I got, I got a rendering from, what's her name over there?
Chris McGaltr?
Yeah, I got it in the car.
Yeah.
It's, they say, Judy, you saw it. I mean, you sent everybody an email. You were like, yeah, let's do it. I don't know if you ever saw it.
I did.
Okay.
Oh, the entire of the.
Also, I got, we're going to bring copies and I was in a hurry. When I can, I'll give it to you on the way out. Just look at it, I mean.
Yeah, no, it's fine. I just wanted to make sure as soon as I did something and if it wasn't once, and then I yelled after doing something that wasn't once or twice. So the place said, hey, what do you guys want to do? And then one was out.
Just the two, one over by the oval and one by the old McDonald's.
Yeah, just, just rename the signs, that's all we need.
So the one.
Right, but the signs have birds on them.
You can't repaint it.
That one looks all right.
Do you want that to match with down?
It's up to you guys. I'm just getting those two east-west sides because it looks terrible.
Yeah, and North Avenue was down to some guy in a landscape trailer. And we had to take another thing so we could try to redo that.
Oh, and don't forget that sign in front of my house where that got, remember I told you that truck backed into it?
Yeah.
Because they just kind of stuck it back in the, and I'm just waiting for somebody to go try and lean on it or something and.
I'll show it, like I said, Jake, I'll give it to you. Everybody else look at it.
Does he email it to you or?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, he emails me.
Yeah, she's got the price and everything right on there.
That'd be cool. Yeah, as long as everybody's.
Yeah, he did a long time ago. Like a month ago.
Yeah, right, a month ago, right, Judy, you saw it or? I'll give you, I'll give you a picture of it. I got it.
I really like the idea of lights are on the crossing signs.
Yeah. I wonder if they ask him.
Fairport and Parenton have, Fairport and Penfield have them. And they really make you look at it and stop.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, would it light up when somebody broke it? Instead of see, get power. Some of them have their pressure plates.
That's what they were talking about.
And then some of them, I don't know if they're pressure plates or if they're, have to, we look at that.
Well, some of them because they, they were talking about it, but they're like up, they're above the ground. So they're not going to work here in the winter when you should.
Yeah, especially when you're following the stuff, you know.
Yeah, you can't.
It's just a.
Yeah.
Please do never, ever, ever get the little orange flags like they have.
Little flag.
They have flag holders on one side and play. On the other side, they take a little like a orange flag and play and merge across the street and.
I saw a guy today, he had stopped, he was riding his bike down. Went to Thomas Boulevard, he goes in the car park, I mean, flips on a stop sign, drives by and then he turns around and says, go. And he got to go.
Guess what?
That just goes on.
Carry your own. It's a good idea.
Oh, we got it. It's a point in his life. Nadja, she's got pizza back there for Junie. Have some slices.
Yeah.
Oh, we got to put it in the fridge, this is not your last meeting now.
So there's going to be a motion to.
I can.
Well, so we are, I mean, it's internal business. Other than eating.
So you take that. We'll call you later.
If there is no other business, anybody would like to bring up at any time, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn. And go to the back room and see what's there.
Great.
Have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Well, we can't have a pizza party, that's Judy's thing.
Oh, Miss Baker? Hi.
Hi.
Hey, Judy.
Thank you.